Welcome everybody to the 12 o'clock show with Mayor Joe. No theme music today because we're using my phone, but you'll probably hear the notification in just a minute that we're live on Facebook. Joining me today, Councilman Boone Packerell, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming in today. We've got a jam packed show with a lot of different things coming on. So Boone's sharing it on his Facebook page because he's got a big following too. So we appreciate that. So I've got a couple of questions for you to kind of start off. We good? Okay. Council's on recess this month, so you're technically on vacation. But before that, you got back to the in-person meetings. Are you happy with the return to in-person meetings to actually be out in council chambers and talking to people? And you know, having an audience and putting you into things like that? Is that, are you happy about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, thank you for bringing this up. Since the beginning, like ever since I started coming to the council as a citizen or as a councilman, I always wanted to be in-person meeting. That's I think all of us together, we wanted to have in-person meeting. That way we can see people, talk to people, see their emotions, good or bad. We can also discuss issues more frequently because we can, we get to talk and meet with them. But all of us, we wanted to do that, but with the pandemic and COVID-19, those were, those things we could not do. But this year, first of all, I want to thank all the scientists and doctors and all those who were able to bring this vaccine out. And with the vaccination up, we are going to come back in person, which is a really, really a big life-changing scenario for me. And I got my vaccine in January because I work for healthcare. So I got an opportunity, I got the very, very first opportunity I took and got my vaccine in January. And all my, my wife, my parents, everybody we took. And also my daughter, who is 13 now, she also took her vaccine because she was qualified after 12 years of age. So that makes it possible to come back to the council. It's a great thing now, all of us can come together and talk to each other and see what can be done. And then also I want to bring one, I mean, I want to tell all the viewers that I encourage each one of you, those who are watching, go and make sure and take the vaccine and see the literature and everything, science behind it. It is helpful, it is preventing us from getting sick. So I would definitely encourage everyone to get vaccinated as early as possible.
Absolutely. Now, we enjoyed the Tomato Festival, at least I enjoyed it. I, it was, it was exhausting. I think I just moved to Huber Park for a couple of days, as did most of everybody from the city. Did you enjoy the festival? What was your favorite part?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No question about it. There are many, many, many good things, a many favorite part, but I would like to share a couple of things. The first thing is all of you, that you have hard work. I was seeing you right, I think six o'clock you were in the crowd. I don't know, six o'clock, I see the Facebook Live and oh, Mayor is there already. And all the team behind you, I think they made it possible. That is a big fabulous thing that we could see and enjoy sitting home and coming back to the, to the festival. And within the festival, we didn't have a good weather in the first day. But even then, without, with those challenges, let me say, with the, with, with those challenges, we were able to do many things. The band was fabulous, excellent. They came forward and we were able to see them perform. And the next day, the biggest thing for me was Tomato War, where I could participate, but the sad part, and I don't want to say sad, but the funny thing was that we were the first team and we finished that in less than five seconds.
Yes.
So next year, I already told Pastor Aaron that I'll not be the first, I may go to the last one and we'll be, we'll be making a strategy and we'll be the longest one, we'll be fighting in the Tomato War. And the other part, which I am grateful for Reynoldsburg City School, and thank you for organizing that one, for Dunk. And I got Dunk and I think the school, and I not only, I think I said, I, I say, I should say, I know that this is a very, very important cause they are doing. And I think we should continue to do that, doing a fundraiser for school, for students, for eighth grade, going back to different field trips and things of like that nature, that is another big thing. And above all food, which is especially for my kids, my both Aditya and Dave, they were talking about the food all the time when they went to Tomato Festival. So that was the big thing.
Well, yeah, we did, the Dunk Tank was fun. A lot of community members were very much encouraged to go ahead and dunk a lot of us, which was great. I enjoyed it. I didn't get a chance to see you too much in that, that's where I was called away to some other things. No, the city staff did an amazing job. They did a great job getting this in there. And kudos to Jennifer Clemmons and Brian McGuire and nameless others that were there all the time. You know, there's just so many to speak of that were out there all the time. So we do appreciate it. We're already in the planning stages for next year's Tomato Festival. So you may have seen on Facebook already today, I've shared to as many of the sites as I could, a chance for you to take a survey about the Tomato Festival. What was your favorite part? What would you like to improve upon? Now, we know the big thing is rides and carnival games. We're, we are going to make sure that we get those back next year. We had them scheduled for this year, but because of issues with staffing and Tyler's Law, it just kind of, we got that cancellation at the last minute. But we are going to bring those things back and, but some other good suggestions. Commenting on Facebook is fine, which is good, but if you're commenting on Facebook but not filling out the survey, it really, we're not going to have that kind of data. So make sure you do go ahead and comment on the survey. And we'll try and get that on our website as well. But again, if you're on social media watching this, you can go ahead and find it and click on it and fill out the survey.
So one thing to ask you, but there are so many specific kids, they were asking me, why not the ride and things? And what can you tell more, what is Tyler's Law?
Tyler's Law, unfortunately, a young man lost his life at the Ohio State Fair a number of years ago. And part of the reason it came out is the ride that he was on was faulty. And then, so what the state of Ohio did is they created a law to make sure that there were more strict requirements for all of the rights to get inspected. And what ended up happening is with that law passing this year and the lack of inspectors that they had in general, they had lack of inspectors even prior to this, but this year especially, they just didn't have enough inspectors to get all those rights certified once COVID was deemed, you know, able to allow for festivals. And then combine that with what we all know is the staffing issue for people not, you know, people needing jobs or having jobs out there, but nobody was taking them. And so it was kind of a combination of those two things.
Thank you for clarifying. And the COVID was also a part of it.
Yeah, I think COVID, I think COVID, because it delayed everything, had Tyler's Law passed earlier and the inspection process started in the beginning of the year, I think it probably would have helped. But because everything kind of, we didn't know what was going on really until, I want to say April-ish. And so April, May, June, July, I mean, we're not talking a huge amount of time for all of that stuff to get done. But we are going to work to that, so make sure you fill out your surveys. Now, one really cool thing that you were a part of this year was a cultural experience at our farmer's market. So why don't you tell everybody who maybe didn't have a chance to come and participate, you know, in our farmer's market? Tell us what that was about.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this question up. First of all, this cultural festival, I was talking way earlier than 2021. But for whatever reason, X, Y, Z reason, this could not happen in the past. But this year, right in the big, from the beginning, when you brought this idea, when I, when I discussed about Director Bowman, she was excited, but we did not know what we were going to do. Because this being the first time, whenever you try something first, it's always fun as well as challenging. And also it's a good opportunity to start because nobody has to tell, okay, these are the parameters. We can do whatever you want and it has to be the best one, right? So we did, we tried, the Director Bowman and her team helped us discussing. But there was a group of women, Bhutan Nepali Women Leadership Group. So they were the one behind the scene, working very hard, like especially Oma Atikari, who was the person working all the bits and pieces of those things. So in the beginning, when we were planning, the one thing that we were a little bit confused, whether will people come and try food? Because this is new and I, because I've been many of these events and people are asking me, I'm so scared of trying this food, how does it look like, what it tastes? I was also very much questioning myself, whether I should, what should we do? But moment we brought up and we started eating, like I think Director Bowman first started trying and like few other city staff started eating, people came forward and did try all the food. And we were so excited, so happy that food went up very early because we have a good problem to have. And also there's a good thing, other part, other thing was like Hannah, we did one young lady within the community. She is fond of doing Hannah. And she started doing, there was a line of around 15, 20 people going out to putting Hannah in their hands, which is very exciting. And even after we closed the event, there were like five or six people, they wanted to come and put Hannah. Wow, this is very exciting for us. And the most exciting part was dance and music. Councilman Baker was there and dancing with a Nepali hat.
I don't know if I qualify that as dancing. I did see the video on that, but we'll go, we'll go. He, he, he tried to dance, yes.
And there was very, very, like not only Councilman Baker, but he was very, because with the hat and you were dancing with a lot of energy, it was distinct out. But there are many other individuals who are not used to dance, they came forward and danced, which is very heartwarming for me to see everybody coming together. And I always believe that we are better together. So that was a reflection of better together. And my next thing is, I think we'll continue, not I think, I, we will continue to make an annual function. So for next year, we have a lot of different ideas. Because this being the first time, we did not know what, how things goes. But this year it went very well. So we have everything planned, I think, we will, I think very soon we'll start discussing what we need to do. And there are many other businesses, they are interested to come forward and put that table and bring things out, maybe to display, to test or to sell. So I think we'll have a grand function next year.
It's going to be good. I'm going to, I'm looking forward to it. I know we've talked about the potential dates and trying to find the right time for it. So it's pretty good so far. Now, you know, you've got two years left in your term. And I know, I know what some of your goals were originally, but you know, now that you're looking down at this, you know, two years to go, what are some of your things that you would like to accomplish once council comes back in September? What are the things that you're looking to, to get clarification on or to try and motivate, move forward in the city?
So basically, the three things that which I was, I was telling before when I was campaigning and the same thing, for last two years, I did the same thing, exactly what I told to the voters when I was going out. And the same thing I'll be pushing forward, that is again, road and sidewalk, these are the two basic things. So I'm very happy that the Canada coat is in our schedule because that is the one thing that I would like to see. There are many other roads, but that particular thing is the number one priority for me, at least in my ward. And as you mentioned, I think you have the numbers, which are the streets that will be going out, are like repaving in this coming year. And also the street and the sidewalks, which is another thing which I wanted to see. Hopefully we'll be able to have the sidewalk, particularly in the, like in the high traffic area, like Main Street between the Kroger, what do you call it, Taylor and Lancaster. Those, that area that we need, that those things, I think we can work on those things.
We might have something for you on that one, but you'll just have to tune in later.
Thank you, that is, that is my other goal. And also, I want to go to the, again, my ward, Ward Three, the Summit Road area. We, I maybe it might take some time, but that's also my goal, to have a sidewalk. There are some part of Summit Road area that has a sidewalk, but some part doesn't have. So wherever the sidewalk's not there, I would like to see the people can walk, bike and, you know, do whatever they want on the sidewalk and being safe and safety. These are my concerns, these were my concerns, these are my concerns, and I'll continue to advocate and go for that.
Oh, believe me, I know you will advocate for that. That's usually, we get through the, hi, how are you? How's the family? When are my sidewalks coming? Usually that's kind of the conversation, which is absolutely the way it should be. Now, there's always, there's always hard decisions the council has to make. You know, there's only so much money that we have to spend, there's only so many things of this nature to go on. And sometimes council is presented with questions. And so for you, I just want to know, when you have to make that decision, when you have to make a decision to vote on something, what's the process? What do you go through in your mind? How do you prepare yourself to know, I think this should happen, so I'm going to vote this way? So what, what do you do for that?
So now do you put me in trouble now? Anyway, so here's, here are two things. Before I became a council member, I used to think, I used to tell, why is this thing taking so long? Like two years, one year, three years, this is nonsense. That's what I used to think. And I started to become more regular to the council meeting and I started thinking, okay, this can be done fast, those were the thing in my head. And when I came to this legislation, then I started sitting in the decision-making process. Now I realized that things cannot be done that fast. It takes time, like emergency things, which I am not, not a fan of that, those things. But there are certain things that we have to do those things. This is not a choice between do a yes or no, because we have to do those things. And in my process of voting, what I do is I do three things especially. First, I read this legislation, talk to bottom, whatever I can. I try to understand, I try to sync with the content of that legislation. Then after that, I start listen to the people. I use all kind of listening, what do you call, listening areas that are available, like Facebook, which is not really a good thing, but that is a thing where I can test who is feeling what. And I also try to reach out to individuals who are commenting on those things and hey, talk to them, meet out, meet to them and see what that person's point of view is. Then again, come back and read once and talk to other colleague and I make my decision and I vote. I don't make the conclusion in my first thing. First, read, listen, listen again and vote. That's what I do.
All right, it's not, never easy when you have some of those decisions that council's got out there. Do we have any questions so far?
Not at this time.
All right, so we'll get some questions in there. So you have a few minutes to stick around, while I go over some other information?
Absolutely.
All right, so we have a couple of updates. First off, we're going to start off with the JFK update. We saw again on social media, some concerns about our restroom that we have in there. So two things, one, we are working to get our restroom fixed. So hopefully, right now, we're actually waiting on AEP to put the electric meter in, so that way there's lights in our new restroom facility. So that's one thing we're waiting on. So that is on them at this point. And we are calling, I don't want to say every day, but pretty close to every other day to make sure that we get that in. In the meantime, we did have porta potty units that were in JFK Park, but we had some rain last week, which I'll touch on in a little bit. And we actually had some video of one of the porta potties going downstream. So it took a while to get that back. So we will have those, they should actually be delivered sometime today. They were supposed to come last week, but because of the rain and some of the other issues, it was delayed a little bit. But obviously, when we have activities out there, we want to have that. We'll make an announcement, especially when those restrooms are open. Believe me, we all want them open sooner rather than later. The next one is the skate park. We know that the skate park is out there, we want to get that one done. We were in the process of repairing it on the, on the surface, but in some of the areas where we actually kind of pulled the old boards off, we found that some of the stuff underneath was rotting out. And so we had to wait and fix that stuff on the inside part of it. And now we're continuing to try and work and get that stuff done. It has taken exceptionally longer than we had hoped for, but we are working to get that done. So hopefully people can get a little bit of time to enjoy it. We also have some news. We are going to be doing some repaving. So JFK and the Livingston House parking lots are going to be closed this Friday. Not Thursday, Jennifer, if you're worried about the farmer's market, but this Friday. The JFK and Livingston House parking lots will be closed because they're going to mill it up. They're going to grind all of the asphalt up, things like that. Now, you can still come to the park, you can still go to the Livingston House area if you want to. You just can't park in that parking lot on Friday. Saturday and Sunday you can, but it's going to be that scraped away stuff. So it's going to be a little bit more of a bumpy ride. Now, starting next week, paving will begin and that's going to be a weather dependent thing. If it doesn't rain Monday, it's going to get done Monday, that type of thing. So if it rains a couple of days next week, it may delay when that stuff's going to get paved out, but it is going to get paved. The parks will be open, except for when they're actually paving. You just can't park in those parking lots at that point in time when they're doing the paving. So that's the JFK situation. We do have a couple of town hall meetings coming up and I hope you're able to join us next Tuesday night, August 31st at 7:00 PM. We're going to be talking about a potential roundabout. The Traffic and Transportation Committee has long sought after the idea of what it would be like to have a roundabout at the five-way intersection. And so based on what they're asking and suggesting, they wanted to have, you know, move forward a little bit for it. But before we get too far into deciding whether or not a roundabout at that location is the best choice for the community, we figured the first thing we need to do is actually have a town hall meeting and gather input from the community because it is going to be a, a challenge. There's a lot of obstacles, obviously, most roundabouts, you know, you have four-way intersection. This is a five-way intersection, so there's things like that. There's concerns about what it will do to traffic, what it will do for people. I saw one Facebook post earlier today, where is the old National Land Boon's European Vacation? Hey kids, look, Big Ben Parliament. At this point, it'd be like, hey kids, look, it's Burger King and Basement Doctor. And then it just goes again and around and around. So we're trying to figure a lot of those things out. But we want the community's input on this before we decide to move any further. We will broadcast it live on Facebook. Probably will not be taking comments at that time, depending on how many people are in there. But we will take comments and answer them after the fact. So if you see something on there and you want us to answer afterwards, we're more than happy to. It's just probably not going to be like what we're doing now as a live Q and A for that one. So that's this Tuesday night, August 31st at 7:00 PM. On August, or I'm sorry, September 7th at City Hall, we're going to have our first Tomato Festival recap meeting. So this is for community members, additional volunteers, people that were part of the volunteer group last time to come and talk about the Tomato Festival for 2022, to start talking, kind of like what you just did. You know, tell us what we liked, what we can improve upon, what the survey results are, things of that nature. So that'll be here. And then the big news of the day is we're going to, we're meeting later today with FEMA to deal with some of the issues that we've had with the, the rainwater and things of that nature. So we're hopefully going to try and get a date where we can have FEMA and the EPA to come out and discuss some of the issues when it comes to the water. So we have, we're meeting, I'm meeting with them later today. So we'll hopefully have, we would like to have FEMA come in and do a presentation about why some of the water issues in Reynoldsburg are what they are and things of that nature. So that's going to be a date to be determined. But again, that's going to be something that we're out there. So I'll be out there later today, here at City Hall, talking with some people from FEMA and then moving around to a couple of different sites to talk about some of the water areas in there. So any questions so far?
I have one.
Okay.
Someone would like to know, how do you join city council?
How do you join, well, the city council is an elected position and you are able to run for election. Every two years, different seats are up. So this year, they have three at-large seats, which means that you represent the entire city. And Councilman Boone Packerell actually represents what they call Ward Three, which is a very specific part of Reynoldsburg that you can find on our city webpage under the city council. You can actually see a map of where all of that is broken down. But they are elected positions that you have to campaign for, for open office, things like that.
That's it right now.
All right, and there is an election this November, as well as not only for city council, city auditor, the school bond issue, things like that will be up there. So a couple of things, and I didn't know if you had had a chance to see this yet. Did you know that our census results have come back in?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so I figured you did, but I just, our census results have come back in and the city of Reynoldsburg has grown 14.5% from 2010 to 2020, which basically means we are now a city of 41,076 people, which means that we are the third largest suburb in central Ohio, which we were before, but most people don't realize that. But now we have solidified our second largest suburb in central Ohio. And that's without any additional housing. That's just because people have found that Reynoldsburg is the place to live. That's why we are the second hottest real estate market in the country from last year. But we do have some statistical breakdowns. We are an incredibly diverse community according to the census results, which I think they're a little bit low. I think we're a little bit higher than that. But it's 50% white, 30% black, 10% Asian and 10% classified as multirace or other. So when you talk about diversity and better together, you know, one of the cool things that on that Saturday night at the Tomato Festival, we had the chance to look out amongst the crowd. For some reason, I, I ended up having the privilege to introduce Arrested Development, which was pretty cool. But I got to go out and look at the crowd. And I, as I saw the crowd, I thought to myself, this is what Reynoldsburg looks like. And then when you see, you know, the data out there to talk about the diversity of our community, it was very much apparent in that.
And one more thing that census is like, there's I think 515% increase of Asian American here in the center of Reynoldsburg. So which is 515% is a valid number.
That is, and we all know that, you know, and we love the Bhutan Nepali community that come in. They've opened businesses, the kids are in our schools, they are part of our community. They get to see some of the dancing that your kids have done all the way throughout. It's been, it's been a wonderful experience. So that is a huge thing for us. Again, we are the third largest suburb in central Ohio. Dublin and Groce City are the only two that are larger than us, we're bigger than the rest. Got a couple of city events coming up. We have our last farmer's market, unfortunately, is tomorrow from 4 to 7. So it's your last chance to pick up some of those cool items and tomatoes and corn and some of the sweet pies that are out there. I know that there's a lemon pound cake for someone that is just divine, so make sure you go up for that. And I know this one is going to be interesting to you. So we all know that we're working on improving Civic Park. And so we had a site meeting last, two weeks ago now, three, two and a half weeks ago, to kind of have a discussion about what that's going to look like. And one of the priorities in Civic Park is going to be a, I guess you'd say, a tournament-worthy cricket field that will go in there. So we're in the process of getting all of that information. So we did make that as priority, you know, one of the top priorities for what goes on in Civic Park is for that cricket field, because we know obviously there's been a very big request from the community about that. But also to have it to a point where, for those of you that have been out to Civic Park, cricket apparently is a 360-degree sport, so the ball can go in all sorts of directions. But unfortunately, where our cricket pitch is right now, there's a parking lot right next door and that's probably not the best pace where the cricket ball is to go into everybody's car. So we're going to try and find a place different for that. But that is something that we are working on. We're just waiting for that engineering contract. So council will see the contract come up hopefully in the next couple, in the next month or so. And then we can get the process of actually doing the design work for that and then get a timeline of when that's going to go. Oh, go ahead, I know, I know you want to talk. This is a big thing, big thing for council.
Thank you, Mayor, because the cricket is a big game for a lot of, especially for new immigrants here. And they are being, we have a one pitch in Dublin, a one in OICU. And Cincinnati, city of Cincinnati suburb was a fair football township. They, they built a cricket pitch last month.
Okay.
And like they have been, the interest of cricket's been growing and it's a very big game internationally. And since we have a team, we have a talent here in our city, why not we give them opportunity and grow our own talent and tell that all of the, maybe it could be throughout the country. We have a cricket team and people can start going and doing competition between the different cities, the different townships, whatever, whatnot. So this is a big deal. The, the pitch that we have right now, as you mentioned, is not appropriate for this game, but at least they're using it for practice. So hopefully they will do that one. And once we have our new pitch ready, people can, they come out and play and learn. Those who do not know, come out and learn. I am not a cricket player, but I used to play as a, what do you call it, in the street, just for fun. But I know the rules. For those who don't know the rules, it's kind of baseball, but there's a slightly different rules on these things.
Well, we're looking forward to it. There's a lot of other things that we're looking out there as well. We've had a couple of onsite community visits with, you know, people that live or are interested in Civic Parks. So we've, you know, had those conversations about Frisbee Golf, we've had splash pack conversations. We've listened to the neighbors in the area and to make sure that those concerns are addressed so that there's nothing too close into their backyards and things of that nature. So while we are, we're not as early in the stages as we used to be, but we are moving forward with it.
And Dog Park, right?
And the Dog Park, yes. And the other good news that we're having is we're continuing to have conversations with the city of Columbus for what is known as Bryce Park. Bryce Park is going to be located kind of across the street from where the current library sits. Right now, it's a stormwater, storm quality retention pond. And we're talking with the city of Columbus at the urging of city council member Stacy Baker and city councilwoman Kristen Bryant. They're the ones that kind of led the charge from this one about working with the city of Columbus to make that a park space, so you can actually have some trails, a gazebo and some other nice things out there. So we're working with them and hope to have some more concrete things to show you as we get a little bit closer along. But again, it's that partnership with the city of Columbus that's going to make these types of things possible. So again, we're trying to add to that green space. We do have some development news. The Eastside Brewery that we are all familiar with, they're actually going to be expanding their hours. So starting Tuesday and Wednesday from 4 to 9, Thursday, 4 to 10, Friday, 3 to 11, Saturday, 12 to 11 and Sunday, 12 to 9. So that's good. And I do believe the slab, which is a great food truck and that's going to be ultimately, it's going to be the restaurant style that they have there, it has a lot of great food. So I encourage everybody again to patronize our local businesses, so that's a really good thing, things like that. Before I get to the next update, do we have any questions?
One question.
Yes.
Will the flooding in Civic Park be addressed?
Very much so. That is actually, you know, when you talk about what the, what the concerns are, we've got plans for larger retention ponds. So the water actually has somewhere to go to. We're going to investigate all of that to make sure that we're working with EPA. We're working with our engineers to make sure that we can try and siphon off as much of that water runoff that's coming from outside of the city of Reynoldsburg before it gets to any of our neighborhoods. We've got a park area right there and it's going to be designed to kind of suck that water in as best as it possibly can. Absolutely.
That's it for right now.
Okay. Got any big plans for Saturday?
Oh, absolutely.
I know, I've got some plans this Saturday for after a long time coming. The KMR location is going to be coming down this Saturday. We've got a big itinerary, parking opens at 10:30 and it's off Bryce Road. So come in off the Bryce Road corridor, not on Main Street. The program's going to start at 11 o'clock and it's going to be about 45 minutes. No, we're not all going to be talking the entire time, but there are going to be a number of special guests there. All of council has been invited, city administrators have been invited. We also have special guest, State Representative Rich Brown, State Senator Tina Maharoff and State Representative, or State Senator Herschel Craig. Franklin County engineer Cornell Robertson is also, I think he's going to be able to make it. As well as we have extended the invitation to the governor's office and it looks like maybe potentially Lieutenant Governor Houston may show up as well. This is a great example of the public-private partnership that will bring worldwide headquarters of the Alliance into Reynoldsburg. And then all of the things that come out after that. Their headquarters is going to be the first thing built, but then you're also going to have other things all of the things that come out after that, uh their headquarters is gonna be the first thing built, but then you're also gonna have other things that are gonna be kind of independently operated, including you know, a hotel, convention space, restaurants, retail, medical offices, things of that nature on those sites. Uh I've seen a lot of people ask questions specifically about the uh McDonald's and the Taco Bell. They're not going anywhere, don't worry, McDonald's and Taco Bell are safe. Uh I know McDonald's is looking to move across the street at some point in time, uh so that way people can kind of like turn right in, get their coffee and egg McMuffin, and then turn right out as they get ready to go into two seventy. Uh but they're not going anywhere for a couple of years. And the Taco Bell's not part of this particular phase. So uh for those of you that want to make that run for the border, you're safe for a while. Uh we also have some music being provided from the Reynoldsburg Raider Marching Pride, as well as Ethiopian and Eterian singing group. Um uh President John Stumbo is gonna say a few words and then I'll have an opportunity to talk a little bit about it. Uh we're gonna have a five-minute live demonstration of tearing down part of the building itself and punching through the wall as we get that process started. Uh unfortunately, as much as I wanted to, I'm not gonna be able to push a button and it blows up and implodes or anything like that, or there's no wrecking ball with it that slams into it looking like a tomato, though we did make that suggestion. Um and again, I know everybody thinks, why are you making such a big deal about this? But the reality is, this is the first step in redeveloping the entire area on Bryce Road. The goal is to revitalize Bryce Road. And this is a longstanding area that has been an eyesore, and so this is the first step, moving from there to the library demolition, which will hopefully occur later this year. We've talked about Bryce Park and then we're gonna continue marching on all the way down to seventy. Uh we have the Turo Township Fire Department and Reynoldsburg Police Department will be there as well. We're gonna have a food truck and an ice cream truck will be open for business after all the presentations. We're gonna have a balloon artist, face painting and silk walkers for the kids to kind of pay attention to. Uh we're also gonna have a paint the building red with uh the tomatoes uh starting around twelve o'clock. So there'll be plenty of snacks and water available if it's too hot out there for everybody, but we've got a lot of those things going on. So I hope you can come out there. Uh again, it's a good community event. Um I know a few people have talked about they want to take a little souvenir of the Kmart building for nostalgic purposes. I know our city attorney's first job was actually at that Kmart location. And I believe there's somebody on Facebook who wants a piece because I think the phrase was, I won't say the exact phrase, but needless to say, they got in trouble occasionally uh at the Kmart facility and they want to have a little bit of a memento. So we'll make sure we save some of those things out there. Uh but those are the big things that are going on right now. Obviously, we've got a lot of other things in the, uh you know, in the pot that we're cooking to hopefully share with council and uh when council returns in September. And a lot of other cool things coming up. The Blues and Brews will be coming up in a little bit. Uh and again, we still have that farmer's market as well. Do we have any last second questions?
We have one for the councilman.
Okay.
What does the councilman think is his biggest accomplishment during his tenure on council?
So there are a couple of things. Now, first of all, the uh one of the accomplishments that we have done is like uh like in the past several years, uh we have not seen that much of a development in our city. So as you, as Mayor mentioned in last, within next two weeks, we are having so much of things. So those are accomplishments that we have received, we have made possible because of working together. So that is, I call it collective accomplishment that we could do here in the city of Reynoldsburg. And the second thing is, that means um, there are three things again, then in second part. The being uh in the council and sitting together and bringing the voice uh in the table is accomplishment in itself. That means uh like, like in before, those things were not possible. Now, sitting here, li- listening to the people, and also we are also encouraging diversity in various different things. So one is June tenth. And this has been happening for several hundred years and for the first time in twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, we celebrated the June tenth in our city. So that is other accomplishment. And also, we uh did several different uh cultural event, ethnic, ethnically important for ethnic, various different ethnic groups. So that is also a very important accomplishment, like we did recognize uh Diwali as Hindu holiday in our city, the first time in the history. Uh we also recognize International Day of Yoga. The, those things could be seen small, but they are very important, very significant culturally and in terms of diversities. So uh I would say the development is the number one thing that we accomplish together. And other thing, uh cultural inclusivity is a thing that we have achieved in last two years and many more to achieve in years to come.
Yeah. I think he's been a little shy on a couple of those accomplishments, but yeah, I mean, you're, you're looking at the ability of council that gave, you know, the city administration the opportunity to create the, the opportunity for businesses to come here. Uh we've actually opened up over fifty businesses uh since January of twenty twenty. And our revenue is actually exceeding those of the pre-COVID year in twenty nineteen. And that's due to the fact of the council's foresight and whether it be zoning or the ability to want to attract development and things of that nature. So those are huge things. That's a great question. That's a good question. You almost got him, but maybe next time. Uh if there aren't any other questions, uh we've got a great show lined up for next week. We have City Councilman Louis Salvati who will be here and he'll be talking about all things chemistry-related. I'm sure I'll have some good things to talk about that. And I'll ask him again some of those same questions. Uh but again, please make sure you go ahead and fill out that Tomato Festival survey. If you have any questions about anything else, please go ahead and reach out and contact us. Uh and again, as soon as we have some more information about the meeting later today with FEMA, uh we'll get that out on our website and social media, especially if there are any options out there. Um just to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on. Um just as another couple of words on that, um after the flooding in twenty nineteen, we actually diverted, um I diverted funding from one plumbing, uh from one water project actually into that area to help address some of the issues. And uh off, you know, Briar Cliff and the surrounding roads of Nocturne, White Butterfly and things like that. Uh we inspected all of the drains to make sure that they were free of obstruction, things of that nature. Uh we will also be spending about a million dollars next year of America Recovers Act money in that general vicinity, again, to shore up some of the, any kind of inconsistencies or issues with the infrastructure as well there. We've also applied for grants from the state of Ohio to deal with any of the water, so uh stormwater and sewer expenditures in that particular area uh as well. But a lot of the problem in that area unfortunately is if uh it is, a lot of those ones are in the flood plain. Uh and some of them are in fact in this flood zone itself. Um if you were to go back in time and use today's standards of being, of houses being built and applied it back when those houses were being built, um probably you'd have to almost go back to Tanya Terrace before the houses would actually be allowed to be built in those areas. Um and that's just part of a, a number of issues. And the rest of it is, the amount of rain that we're getting is no longer uh an unusual occurrence. You know, we're, we're now, three out of the last five years, we've had exceptionally large amounts of rain in a very short period of time. If we got four and a half inches of rain over twenty-four, forty-eight hours, it probably wouldn't be a big deal. But because the four and a half inches of rain that happened last week was in ninety minutes. And that was also a seven and a half inches in Black Lake that had that water running through. Uh so we are working as best as we can. Like I said, hopefully FEMA and either EPA will have some other news for us and some options for our residents in the city as we continue to move forward. Uh in the meantime, Councilman uh Boon Pakaral, I appreciate you coming in today. Always a privilege to speak with you and everybody else, stay safe, stay respectful. And as always, please put away your shopping carts, it's very important. Have a great day, week, everybody. We'll see you all soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.